There's nobody out here, back here for us to disturb. It didn't matter.
Sharon, your microphone is not muted.
All right. I was just asking if it's gonna leave his on.
Josh, this is John Perrier. Do I have audio?
Yes, Mr. Perrier, you do have audio.
Okay, I just want to let you know that Matt Harris will be joining us, but he'll be, he'll be late.
Okay.
All day meeting.
All right. Well, the time is now five o'clock, Mr. Chairman. If you would like to call this meeting to order, we can get the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission work session on the go.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started then with the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission work session. For those listening, this is not a voting meeting. This is just simply a work session to review the items for our meeting in a couple of weeks. This meeting is June eighth, twenty twenty. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order number sixteen and number thirty-four, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID- nineteen, members of the Planning Commission will participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. I was wrong. I said it's not a voting meeting. We have to take one vote, and that is a vote to hold the meeting. But can you take a roll call vote of that, Josh?
Do you want me to do it, Josh?
Yes, please, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, thank you.
Chair Perrier.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris. Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Okay, did I not hear the ones that did not answer? Are they just not here? I didn't get Mr. Wilson or Mr. Strather or Dr. Organe.
Mr. Wilson's here, and Mr. Albert is here, but their both mics were muted.
Okay, I just need to get their vote then. Mr. Wilson.
I will be right back.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann. I think that's necessary to hold a vote every time we have one of these meetings electronically.
Yes, I think it is. Yes.
I can't hardly hear Mary.
Mr. Wilson and Mr. Strather are having technical difficulties right now, plugging in to where they can hear.
Okay. Did they vote yes to have the meeting?
I don't know what they voted. I'm gonna go try to figure out what's the problem.
Josh just went over there.
They are working on troubleshooting that. It should be available real soon.
I think she got my vote. She did Albert's.
Can you hear this, Sharon?
I think.
Can you hear this?
I can, yes.
We're working with Sharon on a technical difficulty here.
If you want to mute yourself, or unmute yourself, just do that.
Mr. Strather is here. His video is working, and his microphone should be working.
I guess it's working now.
Mr. Strather, will you just give us a yes to confirm that you're okay with having the meeting electronically?
Yes.
So we have a yes from Mr. Wilson and Mr. Albert Strather. So we'll move on to the first item on the work session, which is Foxland Phase Ten sidewalk. Julian?
Yes, this was the item that we discussed at the end of our last Planning Commission meeting. This is the sidewalk in Foxland Phase Ten, so we wanted to discuss it again this evening, and the applicant with Meritage Homes, Joshua Gibbs, is on one of the, he is one of the attendees tonight. They are requesting that they not install a portion of sidewalk along the private road within the Foxland Ten subdivision that is near the end of construction. A good portion of that is due to an existing tree line, which they would like to maintain adjacent to Douglas Bend Road. I know at the previous meeting, there was some discussion of a sidewalk fund or some kind of trust fund that had been pretty recently added to the zoning ordinance within the last couple of years. That's not something I'm aware of that we've used yet. That's also, I'm not sure that it would be something that would apply due to that, that language being more specific to major or minor public roads. This is a private road with a private sidewalk, so that is, that is something to consider. I did put the language up on the screen for you all to read through, so I'm not sure that this would apply in this instance. Engineering might want to elaborate more on the sidewalk situation as well, but we wanted further input from the commission. I'm sure the applicant would like to speak as to the sidewalk concern, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Julian, do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Joshua Gibbs, your line has been unmuted. Mr. Gibbs, are you also one of our call-in numbers, one seven zero or two five three?
Josh, just so you know, Josh, I'm back in the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. I'm looking for Joshua Gibbs.
Josh, this is Clay Curtis, eight one seven zero.
Okay. Hi, Clay, how are you? Let me.
I'm great. How are you?
Pretty good. Still hunting for Joshua Gibbs. I see him on, and... Mr. Gibbs, are you also a call-in number?
Those don't look like his numbers. Maybe the, actually, yes, the second one. Do the second one.
Two five three?
Yeah, do that one.
Joshua Gibbs.
Yes, sir.
There we go.
Yes, sir.
We found you.
Thank y'all for your time, and we just wanted to reiterate our concerns, obviously, with, number one, the massive landscaping buffer that's created on Douglas Bend Avenue. We're concerned not only for the, the fact that we'll, we'll end up killing those trees as well as upsetting our clients even further in, in, in those homes that are facing Douglas Bend. I mean, they, they really like that landscape buffer, and we're just, we're really concerned that we're gonna upset a lot of those people more so the fact that we're gonna kill all those, those trees, and, and and so I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have. We just, we think it's not only is it a, it's just not a, a major, a major issue with removing that sidewalk, because a majority of the persons utilize the interior sidewalk, and they go outside on binding to, if they want to exercise, they go outside of the private community.
Did you have anything else to add, Mr. Gibbs?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. Do we have a representative from the engineering department with us tonight? Josh, do you know?
Brian Reif Snyder is on the phone. Let me ask him to unmute. Brian, if you can hear me, control or alternate, Alt-A also works if you're, unless you're a call-in number.
I'm a call-in number.
Okay. What's that number? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm here representing the city engineer tonight, so.
So I think the question that was, well, do you have any comments off, off, off the bat, Brian?
Well, just, just talking with Nick about this, Foxland was approved before he even started working for the city, so we're not really sure what the requirement was for not having a sidewalk initially on Douglas Bend Road in that area. It is a private sidewalk. The fund doesn't really work here. It's not applicable to do that, in Nick's opinion, but not doing anything at all isn't a good offer either. We kind of feel like, I'm not sure what they could do, but coming and asking for a waiver after the fact, it just isn't, doesn't seem like a good, good plan on their part.
Chairman?
Yes.
Didn't we discuss last time that, talked about the money that they was gonna spend on the sidewalk and actually try to find a way that, that money being spent, we could put it somewhere else? Did we have that discussion? Because I thought we all come to the conclusion that sidewalk wouldn't really work that well in that particular location.
Yes, Councilman Fennell, the discussion was about this sidewalk fund, which you see is Article thirteen point oh nine, point oh five there in the ordinance. Question is, this was approved so long ago, we don't know if the sidewalk was intended, if they were supposed to have a sidewalk on Douglas Lane, and they moved it over on their property, which is sometimes done, out of the right of way, for the sake of constructing it, because it was difficult to construct along Douglas Lane. So if the, if this sidewalk was intended to serve on Douglas Lane but moved over onto their property, then the fund would be applicable here, but we don't know if that's the case, or if they weren't required to put sidewalks along Douglas Lane. They were just putting one along that side of that private drive, in which case this fund is not applicable, according to the engineer and the planning department. And I don't know that anybody has an answer as to what the original intent of the sidewalk was. I guess that was the question. Does anyone have any information? Is there, is it documented anywhere what the intent of the original sidewalk was to be?
I went back and I looked at minutes. I could, and, and the staff reports from this phase, I could not find any language that supported that, even though both Nick and Bill stated that they were called conversation about that. And previous, when the, the PMDP came in for Foxland, or at least one version of it, at least fifteen years ago, there was discussion about the sidewalk in the minutes. It was very unclear how they actu, what they actually approved it as, because that's when they were talking about Foxland Boulevard as well, and if they needed sidewalks along the golf course. They ended up having some kind of statement that said they wouldn't have sidewalk requirements along the, along a portion of Douglas Bend Road from Foxland Boulevard to Foxland Drive, and I have not been able to identify what they meant by that, because I don't know what Foxland Drive is. And that was at least fifteen years ago. So we have looked to see if there's language about that, but I don't have clear language on Douglas Bend Road and the sidewalks that we're supposed to be on there. It's not very clear from old PMDPs of Foxland.
That's a really important statement you made there. You said it was in the minutes that there would not be any sidewalks from Foxland Boulevard to Foxland Drive.
And I don't, do you know what Foxland Drive is?
I think Foxland Drive is what we now call Vining's Boulevard, and it's been renamed.
And that's, that's, I am currently researching that to see if I can get some clarification, because the minutes from that meeting were very, it was very unclear, but that was something that was discussed, and it was, there was a statement in the action form about that. So I can work to see if I can get that clarified before the Planning Commission meeting in two weeks, but that's, that's where I'm currently at.
That would be my opinion. This is just my opinion, since this is a work session, and we're giving the applicant guidance for the meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, is that if we can find that at some course through a plat revision or whatever, that Foxland Drive was renamed to Vining's Boulevard, then it's pretty clear that these, this is an interior sidewalk. It has nothing to do with Douglas Bend, and it certainly is not applicable to the sidewalk fund, if that's the case. But what I heard engineering say was that even if that's the case, engineering wants something along there, something done, that doing nothing is not really a good option. I do believe it will kill a lot of those trees. That's just my horticultural opinion.
This is Joshua Gibbs. Can I ask a question?
Certainly, Mr. Gibbs.
Can I ask the engineering department what they would suggest?
Yes, that would be the same question I was about to ask.
I'd have to ask the city engineer, but maybe you could put the sidewalk on the other side.
There, there is.
There is one already?
So you want us, so you're saying put it on Douglas Bend?
No, I'd have to look here and see what's going on.
There's sidewalk on both sides of that private drive. No, sir. We're, our property is not, the, the sidewalk is on the interior of Douglas Bend. It's not. It's on private property. We're not on the right of way. Brian. And we've got significant grade issues that's gonna have to be contended with, and once that happens, I will have to agree with the chairman. It, those trees are gonna, they're gonna die, and they're gonna cause problems down the road, collapsing, and, I mean, we just don't want to be held responsible for trees falling over or damaging property or anything like that, because it makes us very nervous because of the location of that sidewalk. We would just, I think it's a safe play just to leave it out and leave the trees there. It serves a great buffer, and more so, the sidewalk that is on Douglas Bend is actually on the other side of the road by the gas station. It's on the gas station side of Douglas Bend. If you're heading, I think that would be south.
Mr. Gibbs, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think I know how to determine the original intent of this sidewalk. If we could zoom in on this drawing and see it a little bit closer, or if I just lean closer to the screen, does the sidewalk that's drawn in orange connect to the Foxland property to the north of this property? Because if it doesn't, then obviously it wasn't meant to serve as a community sidewalk to continual along Douglas. But if it shows it going through an open space and connecting back onto the road, well, okay, never mind.
It doesn't.
This plan that you've drawn. Julian?
It doesn't show, it doesn't show it extending north.
Even in previous versions of this drawing?
Um, I'd have to go back and see if there are older ones. I haven't noticed that it does that.
Okay. If you find that in older drawings, then this would be a situation where I think the sidewalk fund comes into play. But if it doesn't, I think it, it just never was intended to serve as a community walk along Douglas Lane.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I can continue to research that.
So do we have any other comments from commissioners to give them some guidance? Because I think engineering is saying they want, they don't want to just simply waive this.
When I would like to see.
Alana?
Yeah, I said I would like to see something done, not necessarily, you know, damage to trees or, or that landscape buffer, but something. So I would suggest whatever Julian researches finds. But, um, yeah, that's what I was, when the sidewalk trust fund and the bike lane trust fund came up, that's kind of what I thought it would, you know, lend itself to this. That's it.
Mr. Wilson or Albert?
I have nothing.
I don't have anything at this point.
Councilman Fennell, did you have anything else to, some direction to give them?
No, sir.
Well, Mr. Gibbs, I can only give you my opinion then, and that is, in this case, I would probably think it's a private drive sidewalk. Doesn't have anything to do with public access, and so therefore the fund is not applicable, and I would rather preserve the trees than to have a walk on that side of the private drive. That's just one person's opinion on the commission.
My view is the same as yours, Chairman Perrier.
So if there's no other feedback, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Item number two is Axum Properties Building Addition Site Plan. Sharon, are you handling this one?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have to forgive my voice, because I have, I was out in the air a whole lot yesterday, so I think that's what did it. Axum is, they're on Gateway Drive. We approved their first plan with forty thousand square feet, and now they're wanting to add the warehouse and manufacturing facility that is, and it will be ninety-eight thousand square feet right to, on the other side of the property. They are adding eighty-eight parking spaces. Adding, so they're not, buff, buffer yards aren't required, but they're, since they are surrounded by IR property, but they do have, they have plenty of, of parking area screening. The engineering department, I think, had some comments on the drainage. I don't know if they had stormwater calculations. They weren't included in my packet.
But we do not have any stormwater calculations to review on this project, so we are asking for a deferral, or suggesting a deferral.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, James Fenton?
Yes, sir. The city has applied for and received a grant, and will be putting out to bid to put a stormwater detention facility just to the south of those two buildings. So that is in the process. We have had studies done that allows it to take all of that into account, and I will work with engineering to make sure they get all this, all that information.
Mr. Fenton, did you say that the grant had been approved, or you were in the process?
Yes, sir. It has been approved, and we are in final design, putting it out to bid. Expect to go to construction sometime this summer.
Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Do we have anybody from Greenlit here?
Andy, Andy, your line has been unmuted.
I'm here. This is Andy Leith, Greenlit Design.
Hello, Andy. Go ahead.
As Brian stated, and we did, and Clay Curtis, too, so Josh, if you want to unmute him, he's working with us on this.
Clay, you've been unmuted.
Hey, there's Clay Curtis.
So yes, we did rush the cement. I'm not gonna lie to you guys about that, just to try to get things going for Axum. Our office is aware of the deficiencies, but we're confident we can get them taken care of by Thursday.
Mr. Curtis, did you have anything to add?
No, sir, I did not. I, I just echo Andy's sentiment there. I mean, we were, we started out on the forty thou, or the, we started out with a thirteen thousand square foot addition to his existing building, and then he scrapped his plans, and we started out with the, the new building on the same piece of property just east of his current facility.
So I think, as I understand it, is, you know, with the addition of a ninety thousand square foot building, we've significant, excuse me, we significantly reduced the pervious space on the property, and it requires a lot more stormwater detention. And y'all are planning to do it off-site as a community detention. I don't know if that community detention is part of the other project, large project we discussed last week. Mr. Fenton, I don't know if you want to?
No, it's not. It's completely separate. This detention facility we're putting in will be just to the south of Axum and to the north of the substation that's out there.
Is Brian, I'm sorry. These, these Zoom meetings are hard to tell when everybody's done talking sometimes.
I know.
Brian, one of the things I think we talked about early on, is that off-site detention gonna be able to handle any of this impervious area at all? Or is this site gonna, is, is this addition gonna have to stand alone?
No, it's being designed to handle everything on that parcel.
Well, is it also handling water quality? That would be our question for you, Andy.
We were, yes, we were anticipating having to handle water quality our side, but detention would be off-site. Is, are we, are we still on the same page with that?
I think so. We just need to have, I mean, we just want to make sure our submittals are, are complete. That way we have enough time to, to review stuff, so.
And I, I completely concur with you, and so I've always told you guys, you do what you gotta do.
So Andy, my suggestion is that the new high-flow product out there that handles water quality retention, if you'll design that onto the site so that you're releasing clean water next door, is that what you intend to do? And the name of the product escapes me. I'm done talking.
There's a couple of different products that have that high-flow capacity that really shrink the footprint. And so that may be, this may be a really good application for that, because as you can tell from the site, boy, it's getting crowded. So that, that honestly may be a very, very good alternative to shrink that footprint of the bio-retention area. And I think that product, they've made the presentation, engineering, as I understand it, Nick is agreeable to trying it out, if he hadn't already tried it out somewhere.
My understanding is that Lance makes the decision on that. If you're handling the va- If you're handling the volume of water somewhere else and you're releasing clean water, he might approve that. Do we have any questions from other members of the commission? Um, so engineering is suggesting a deferral, that, uh, that you defer the item. I would just say if you can, you'll need to satisfy engineering before our meeting in two weeks.
Yes, sir, I completely understand.
Or, or we'll ask you to defer it.
That'd be fine.
Any other comments from commissioners? Well, seeing none, then we'll move on to the next, uh, next item. Item number three is Big Station Camp, uh, commercial, an amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Sharon, you're handling this one?
Yes, I've got this one. I did the, we renewed the preliminary master development plan last year. Um, Mr. Lamb is wanting to get a final, final master development plan approved for, the entire structure is gonna be seventy-five hundred square feet eventually. But we're wanting to get the first forty-five hundred, is ready to get started on it, and three thousand will be done later. And you can see that on there. That's got a, they've got a separate, the part to the north is the three thousand square foot that will be added at a later date. But all, everything on the, uh, on the parcel and all the parking and everything has been calculated on the seventy-five hundred.
Is that all, Sharon?
Yeah, that's it.
Do we have a-
Everything else was good.
Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
I'm here. This is Andy again.
Go ahead, Andy.
Um, we don't really have anything to add, um, based on the comments that we received. We're working through getting everything revised and we did, we went ahead and moved the driveway as requested by engineering. Uh, we shifted it to the north. And, um, I guess the only, maybe they jump in here and clarify if I'm misunderstanding. Uh, we don't wanna have to, we don't mind to build our driveway over to the adjacent property uh, to connect to, um, the cor, the, the block that's on the corner of Big Station Camp and, and Long Hollow. But we don't really wanna approach the adjacent owner for any easements. Uh, I don't know why we would need to approach him for easements or her, whoever owns it.
We certainly don't-
You're talking about the-
We certainly don't mind to build our driveway to the property line.
Yeah, that's what we're asking for, just to bring it up to Anthony Holt's property line and stop it there. That way, uh, in the future, there's not a fight over who, who incurs that cost.
Certainly understand that, so, I mean.
Now, you may have to get a temporary grading easement to tie that, that grade back down or up or however you're gonna tie that in, but that would be the only easement I would think you would, you would need.
I, I- I looked at it, Brian. I, I think we can make it work. Maybe there needs to be a five-foot easement or something, but we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, are y'all talking about the connection to the property to the north of this? It's another retail strip center?
It's vacant right now, Chairman Perrier, but I don't know if there's been a plan submitted on it or not, that I think would have been conceptual on there.
Well, it's also out of the city limits, so it's controlled by the county. So we'd have to work with them on their driveway spacing on our, our public street.
It's controlled by the county, but we've reviewed that property to the north several times.
Is it in our planning region then?
Oh, yeah, it's in our planning region.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any questions for the applicant or for staff from any member of the commission? Hearing none. Uh, it looks pretty straightforward as long as you make that connection to the property line. Andy?
Yes, sir. No problem.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Next items, uh, four and five are Bledsoe Springs Annexation and Plan of Service, uh, rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Gillian?
Yes, um, so this is a request for an annexation rezoning with a PMDP, so I've just included it, um, for one discussion this evening. This annexation would include forty-four point seven nine acres. The property is adjacent to an old railroad right-of-way that is not located within city limits. Um, so city staff would need more documentation on this right-of-way and the potential of the abandonment and annexation in order to make the subject property contiguous to city limits. Um, so this is a survey on your screen of the property and you can see, uh, along the diagonal edge of, of the northern edge of this property, that existing railroad right-of-way that goes through a lot of our industrial, uh, zoning areas. We would need to look into the potential of abandoning this, annexing into the city, who would get ownership, if it would split between two, the two different property owners or multiple property owners. Um, cause right now this property is not contiguous technically with city limits. Um, you wanna go to the next slide? The rezoning request would rezone the property from R-15 to MRO for a residential development for approximately two hundred units of single-family home lots and town home lots. City staff has recommended that the applicant consider a planned residential development zoning, uh, rather than MRO since there is no commercial development with this proposal, um, so that can be discussed further tonight. The property will be accessed off Hartsfield Pike from two new roadways and will connect to a stubout point in the Sunny Mead subdivision to the east. Um, so your screen is turned, um, the east is on the bottom of your, your screen right now. The applicant has also included conceptual architecture, um, if you wanna go to the next slide, that's your buffer yards. They are showing their buffer yards in open space tracks, so we are happy to see that. That is easier for management in the future. Um, and then for your architecture, uh, the proposed materialist would be, include seventy percent masonry materials. They did include, um, hardy board in this, so seventy percent masonry materials, including, um, cementous materials such as hardy board. Um, so that is technically an alternative from the MRO zoning. Um, should they go to something like a planned residential development, they wouldn't necessarily be tied to any kind of brickstone requirement. So that is something, um, that they are considering. Um, again, the applicant is here, um, this is represented by, uh, Greenlid Design. Thank you.
All right, Andy, if you're still there.
I'm still here.
Go ahead.
So I guess the biggest comments, the MRO zoning, the reason we chose that, this is simply what we discussed at the pre-app meeting. I think we've got plenty of open space to change from that MRO zone into a residential zone and that'll achieve the same effect that we're showing you guys here tonight. So I, I'm not against requesting an alternative zone that everyone feels more comfortable with as opposed to MRO. If everyone is okay with the densities and things of that nature that we've proposed here tonight.
Andy, this is Bill McCord. I have a question about the townhomes.
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, one of the renderings that was shown on the screen just a minute ago, a photograph, I guess, of a similar type of townhome, shows a garage front homes with a apron and then a sidewalk.
Yes.
On the top picture and not so much the bottom picture. What's the distance between the building and the sidewalk?
Well, in the picture, it's, uh, obviously too close to have a parking spot in there. The picture is a product that this builder has actually built in White House, that they're just trying to give you a, not really saying that this is the exact that they're gonna build, but the picture is intended to focus mainly on the architecture, not the, uh, parking and the configuration of the sidewalk.
Okay.
I think everyone, what I've drawn and what I've spaced out in the design, and I can clarify that for the recent middle, is to have twenty foot from back of sidewalk to front of garage.
And are you looking at single-car garages or double-car garages?
Those in the picture are double-car garages or appear to be, the ones on the bottom are single cars, so there's probably gonna be-
Yeah.
Those products.
Okay.
But there'll be parking for at least two spaces per unit.
And these would be fee simple lots?
That's the intent right now, is to do the, the fee simple lots, uh, for these and so that's the intent right now.
Okay.
If that changes, I'll make you aware at the next planning commissioner in between.
Okay.
Uh, Gillian?
Yeah.
What I heard him say was twenty feet out of parking space outside of the right-of-way. Well, maybe it's more correct to say twenty feet from the house side of the community sidewalk to the garage door.
Yes.
Okay. Does that comply with our code? Because we have specified that in our code.
I believe it's twenty feet. That sounded right. I'll, I will, I will confirm that, but I believe that's what it is.
That's, Andy, did you look that up in our code? Is it twenty feet or was that a dimension you came up with?
Twenty foot is the, is in the code as far as being a legitimate parking stall that needs no overhanging.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Brian can jump in and confirm that if he, if I'm wrong.
And depending on the zoning, that may be also the required setback.
Yes.
Brian, did you wish to add to that?
Uh, I think we just, we, if there's a car parked in the driveway, we don't want it hanging over the sidewalk. It's kind of our position, so.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
The commission?
Chairman, James Fenton, can I speak here? I would, uh, ask that there be something put in, in the paperwork here that these people understand that they'll be buying a house next to an industrial park and that that can't raise its head later on, just like we did with the folks south of the airport. Had to put some kind of disclaimer, they understand that they're gonna be next to an industrial park and there will be lights and there will be noise, there will be all of that stuff and they can't be complaining and, and disrupting operations out there later on.
So, um, Mr. Fenton has requested that that be posted in the paperwork. I'm trying to figure out which paperwork that gets posted, on the recorded plat or in like, um, sales agreements. Uh, staff, how does that get communicated to the potential, uh, residents?
I, I can jump in real quick. Uh, we put it on the plat out there at, uh, Cairo Estates, on the one next to the airport.
Ask Bill McCord.
We, we can add that for information purposes on the zoning document, preliminary master plan and final master plan. Uh, and then also on the plat. I don't have any problem putting that on there. Uh, it doesn't obligate or doesn't de-emphasize that, uh, the, or not require that industrial uses not to exceed the noise standard, though. So, uh, I don't know what might get built next to those or what's in those buildings there now, but there, they would be held to the noise standard on the adjacent property. It's zoned and, uh, residential now. So it'll still be residential.
That's my concern. Our noise ordinance states X number of decibels at the corner of a house. And while, at this point in time, clearly there are no noise disturbances out there. If you then go in and put a house seventy-five feet from that building or fifty feet from that building, their normal operations may actually have a, may be too loud and you're encroaching upon the industrial center there.
Uh, just, again, it's already zoned residential right now.
That doesn't change my concern. The way this design is shown, they've put condominiums as close as they possibly, or duplexes as close as they possibly can to that industrial building that's already there.
So, a question for Andy Leath. Um, why, why did you go that close to the line with those condominiums where one industrial building is really, really close? I mean, I'm, I'm surprised the setback wasn't further on that industrial building, but it's already there.
So, it may be a little misleading at this scale, but the railroad right-of-way is actually sixty foot. And, and I had this come up a little bit ago. They're currently in the process of having that abandoned and we're supposed to be getting paperwork from the lawyer just any time now where that's been abandoned. And so you still have, even with this design that you'd have right in front of you, there's a good sixty feet of heavily wooded railroad right-of-way between the condominiums and the, uh, the townhomes and the property line. So there's, there's a little more space there than it looks, but we were trying to avoid the stream that runs through there. There's a stream that runs right through the middle of the property with stream buffers and things that were needed, uh, pushed them back this, the way that it did. And even though this does not have a flood plain, uh, according to FEMA, we were trying to push the property, the, the residences as far uphill as we could get on to avoid any flooding issues.
So I'll ask you a two-part question, Andy. What is the rear setback on this property? And are you assuming that you'll have the right-of-way, um, abandoned? Are you going to the middle of the right-of-way or are you going to the edge of your property proper with your setback?
We have proper setbacks, uh, as the boundary is today without the right-of-way.
Okay.
When we get the right-of-way, it's gonna be what we label as the greenway easement and open space. We're not gonna push anything back or not intending to push anything back. So I'm, I'm maintaining a proper buffer right now, even on the, as the boundary sets today. So the buffer is just gonna grow when they get the railroad right-of-way. Yeah.
Okay, that answered my question. Are there any other questions from members of the commission?
Mr. Perrier, I'm not a member of the commission, but I do have a question.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. McCord.
Uh, the railroad right-of-way shown on this, and this is probably the best drawing that shows it. The tracks aren't there, they've been taken up, but, um, it is the alignment of a greenway shown on the long-range plan. It extends down through here, so that would be something that we would like to see installed within what's the area shown is that right-of-way.
I'm sorry, I thought that the greenway along the abandoned rail bed was compromised when we did Beretta.
It was split in half further north, but not in this location.
Uh, okay, this is south, yeah.
This is southwest of there.
So are you asking my client to build this right-of-way or build the greenway or just give you the space to have a greenway in?
Provide an easement.
Now, okay, yeah, he's well, he's well prepared.
Not to construct it. I mean, they're willing. If they wanna construct it, that'd be great.
I don't think I can talk him into that.
Well, I mean, I mean, if he wants to construct it in conjunction with his development site for a walkway, you know, for some period of time that would serve his residence, that'd be good, too. And then later on, the city could tie into it on either end and, and use that portion. And, and then when that happens, begin maintaining it.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I, he's well aware of the greenway. We brought that to his attention. So he knows he's gonna have to, um, to set aside an easement through there. And we just felt like it'd be a good thing to, when he gets that railroad right-of-way, just dedicate that portion as the easement. There's still gonna be a good, you know, I've got a lot of open space over there up against that railroad. So it's gonna be plenty of room to build it.
Okay.
I've got a question for Gillian or Brian. Brian, probably. Uh, Brian, whenever we did the Gateway Drive extension, was that right-of-way not obtained? Was that not abandoned along the whole Gateway Drive area?
No, it was just a, it was just a portion of what Roy Cecil was able to get from CSX out of the real estate office at, in Jacksonville, Florida. Um, they only abandoned that portion. Now, why they didn't do the whole line back to the main line or why they, I, I don't know what the rhyme or reason for that is. But they only abandoned what he and, and his sister- But they only abandoned what he and, and his sister, uh, owned out there.
We have spoken, we've spoken to CSX and they have officially said they, they have abandoned that entire, uh, that entire bed from our industrial park clear back, uh, to just shy of, of Airport Road on the, in the southeast there.
James, do you have something in writing? I just, I hate to ask that, but.
Yes, I do.
An email or a letter or something. It'd be good to, for us to get a copy of that, just to put on file.
We've also had it surveyed, the entire length of it. Um, the original easement was for 200 feet. It narrows down to 160 feet someplace in there, but for the most part it was a 200 foot easement that goes through there. Um, and we've surveyed out the middle 100 feet, just for everyone's information.
James, is there any possibility that the city or some customer in the industrial center would want to reactivate that line and?
No, our intent and hope is that we will be able to run fiber up that abandoned rail bed into the park.
Okay. So we would need to keep an easement for that purpose too.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners or staff? Well, as I see it, um, we're suggesting that you put on the plat, uh, to make future residents aware of the noise concerns of the industrial park. But to answer your question, Mr. Fenton, it sounded, staff's response sounded like we don't really have any way of enforcing that, but, uh, but at least we'll make them aware of it. At least that's what I heard. I think, I believe I heard staff say. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill.
Yeah, that's, that's similar to what Andy had mentioned earlier that we did at Cairo Estates. Just putting them on notice.
Okay. Well then, um, we'll move on to the next item. Item number six is Domino's, uh, site plan. Sharon, you're handling this?
Yes, I've got that one too. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. This is for the Domino's on Maple Street. Um, probably all of you know where it is. It sits way back off the road. It backs up to some of the fairground property. They are wanting to, they're going to build, uh, almost twice as big. They want to put it up closer to the road. It's about twice as big as the one they have now. They're going to keep the other one operating until they get this one started and they're going to tear it down. Um, this one will have some sit-down area. They have provided parking for all of that. They, it is a brick exterior. They are showing landscaping all around. They can't quite meet the buff, buffer yards. But we're doing, with all the landscaping that's being added, we're doing, uh, average landscaping. And they should be, look a lot better than they are, than they do now. So I, I think they're going to be just fine. If you have any questions about it, one of the applicants, I don't know if anybody is on the line from Barkhausen. Uh, they're in, or yes, they're in Washington.
Yeah. Hi, uh, this is, uh, yeah, Chris Furcom with Barkhausen Engineers and we are.
Hello, Chris.
Area. Um, yeah, I don't know that I have too much to add there, um, other than, uh, the owner just wants to make an investment in the property to make it look, function a lot better. Hey, and, um, uh, put in a, a modern building, um, with the seating and, uh, and, uh, meet all the code standards. Um, we need a little bit of width, uh, for vehicles to be able to turn around the site. Uh, the property is, is pretty narrow, which is why we're needing to encroach it. For areas, as you can see. Uh, but other than that, our, our client is very excited about the project and I'm able to answer any questions you might have.
I, I have a question. The parking spaces on the east side of the site are 90 degrees while the drive aisles are one-way. Uh, is it possible to angle those spaces?
Um, it's, it's a bit of a tight, definitely look at that. Um, but it's, it's a type because of the need for us to have the, uh, crash enclosure there at the bottom. And, um, and still provide all of those stalls. Every single stall on this site
is needed.
Are you able to get the delivery truck turned around on that, Chris?
We ran some truck turning, truck turning templates on that and, um, the truck will be able to navigate the site.
Okay. I spoke with Stephen, uh, by email last week and we're still, uh, needing your stormwater calculations on this before Thursday. So.
Uh, yes, you will definitely get those from us. We will have every comment you gave us responded to by then.
Okay. Great. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
We seem to have lost John per year. We may have had low bandwidth connections. So everybody, if you just hang on one minute, let me see if I can get him back. John, do we have you back yet?
Can you, Josh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. The problem is, uh, this happens occasionally out here on the farm. I've lost internet connection. So, I'm blind and I think if I'm blind, somebody else is in the meeting. Matt Harris is not online yet, is he?
Uh, I'm not seeing him as a member of the meeting. Uh, Dr. Regan, could we press your services to run the meeting until Mr. Perrier regains internet connection, please?
Bill, the last comment you made, and the caller said they would look into the angle parking. Are there other questions from members of the commission?
Uh, there was a little discussion about stormwater plans being provided as well. I didn't think, I didn't get the impression that they were going to really consider angling the parking spaces on the backside of, of the site.
Is that going to make it more difficult for ingress and egress from those spaces?
It, it shouldn't because it's 24-foot wide aisle. But it certainly will create possibilities for people to back out and go the wrong direction.
Well, do you think, um, or does engineering think that, um, angle parking will work?
I, I think angle parking would work. It's just whether or not they can provide the code required number of spaces by replacing the uh, head-end space with angled spaces. With the perpendicular spaces to the angled spaces.
With the old building is taken down, would that provide the proper room?
The old, the old building will be taken down. And this is the plan that will be constructed. Looking at, you're looking at the plan after it's down. Like I said, I think we could try to see if we can get those stalls. The problem that we're having is squeezing in the trash enclosure, um, there at the bottom.
Yeah.
And there, um, and trying to get that in there as well as all those stalls. There's just, uh, we're kind of short on, on length there, if you, if you get what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But it's, it's something we can sure try to make happen. I understand what you guys are, we're best to accommodate that.
Are there questions from, um, commission members? Or from staff? If not, we will.
I did want to point out, just to make sure that you, you all understand that this site would be a construction site that will continue to be operated as construction goes on. So that the building that's there now would continue to operate as the building until the new building is constructed. And then they would begin the process of tearing down the old building and then constructing the back half of the property with parking improvements. So they'll be operating while under construction or remodel, if you want to call it that.
Smart move.
So that they're, I believe that's their intent. Is that right, Mr. Foulthrum?
Uh, it is. That's correct. Yeah. We want to stay open and that's why we positioned the new building where we did. Uh, it doesn't overlap the footprint of the existing building. Um, yeah, the owner definitely wants to stay open for business.
Okay. We'll see y'all in two weeks. I look forward to it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Item number seven. Who has this? Jillian?
Yes, I do. Um, this is the FMDP for the Holiday Inn Express that is proposed on Greenlee Boulevard. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide. Um, this location has been approved for a hotel with an amendment to the PMDP for this development. Uh, so this is just the FMDP. Next slide, please. The layout generally, um, follows what was approved with the PMDP. Staff had some basic comments about landscaping. Um, and, and some clarification things about the, uh, stormwater to the south. Um, the architecture, if you could go to the next couple of slides. So the architecture was approved with the PMDP at 30% brick and stone with 70% other materials. Um, these, it's hard to tell on these elevations and I've asked for some clarification, but they've appeared to have removed some of the brick and stone from the previous version. So I've asked for some clarification on that, um, to make sure they're meeting the 30% as was approved with their PMDP. Um, and I think go one, a couple more slides. I think there's a color rendering. So, um, just some clarification on the architecture, uh, for us, but generally the FMDP is, is consistent with the PMDP. Thank you.
Do we have a representative?
The representative is Andy. There we go.
This is Andy.
Andy who?
Lee.
Just checking.
Yeah, I understand. Um, we're in agreement with that. The, the client's aware of the architectural requirements that were passed the PMDP phase. So they're working on getting that addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion from staff? They meet the requirements otherwise?
I only have a, this is the first time I recall seeing this. I want to make sure that that sign that projects above the roof line is code compliant. I know it's a minor little detail, but we want, we'll have to check on that.
Is this, is that shown on the elevations? Go back a couple of slides. We'll make sure that's code, but it looks like on the elevations, it's below the roof line.
Do we have questions from, uh, commission members?
No, sir. No questions right now.
Hearing none, uh, we'll have this back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Next item, Gallatin Industrial Data Center, site plan. Jillian?
Yes, um, so next slide. This is the site plan for the Gallatin Industrial Data Center. This annexation and rezoning is currently going, uh, through city council right now. Um, so should it follow the schedule that it's currently on? The rezoning would be, um, completed before the site plan would come before you in two weeks. So obviously the site plan couldn't be approved until the rezoning came through. Um, so this is the general area of the property. Uh, next slide. Um, and this is the, the zoomed out site plan for reference to show you, um, where they will be constructing this new building. Um, it's approximately 970,000 square feet. Um, I did request confirmation on that size. That's what I believe it is. It includes a large data center building, which is located, um, on the north side of, on the top of this page, which is towards the north of the area to be annexed into the, into the city. Also includes a gatehouse, a substation and a construction office. Um, so you can see those towards the middle of your screen. Um, the, uh, property gets access from Gateway Drive. So there'll be, uh, roadways connected off of Gateway Drive. They are shown as private, um, at this time to access the property. Next slide, please. Uh, now the new building is on the northern end of the, and in the center of the prop, property, but they are showing grading and drainage work to be done throughout the property. This is pretty consistent with, um, larger scale developments. They do a lot of grading beforehand. Um, uh, with the, with the beginning stages just for stormwater mitigation. Next slide. And then there's a couple more detailed pages. Keep going through these. Okay. Architecture. Um, the architectural elevations show concrete panels, metal panels and a curtain, and curtain wall glass as the facade materials. This is an alternative architecture request to the industrial zoning architecture requirements, which really only require 50% brickstone along the main office, particularly where a right of way is in view. This bu, building will be pretty heavily screened from view from most right of ways. Um, so it won't be very visible. This building design will also likely be superior to that basic requirement. Um, next slide, please. And then one more slide. So we did ask for some more information on their landscaping plan. This is kind of their basic, very basic landscaping plan. So we, we should be getting some more information on that with our recent middle to make sure we're meeting those buffer yard requirements. Obviously with a development like this, they will be maintaining tree lines and fence lines, um, particularly along the perimeters of the property. Um, but we would, we would expect any other buffer requirements to be met, any parking lot requirements to be met, any screening that's required. Um, so we've asked for a little clarification on those things. Um, but we should be getting those Thursday with the recent middle. Thank you.
Questions? An awfully quiet group. Okay. Hearing none. Next item. You okay, Josh?
Uh, Mr. Stand-in Chairman, did you want to hear from, uh, our EDA team at all about this project? Are you?
If they have something to say, of course.
We have James Fenton and Rosemary Bates on the phone or on the line.
Yeah, sure.
I appreciate that. No, I think, uh, Jillian went over that very, very well. And, uh, as you can tell. And, uh, as you can tell, purchasing the amount of property they have, but just putting that building up in there, they are truly looking for a lot of buffer in there. If you look at their site plan also, they've avoided anything that has any kind of ecological sensitivity. They've done a very, very good job of making sure they've maintained buffers on every piece of wetland down there, so you should be, uh, pleased with that. Thank you.
Rosemary?
No, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Questions from commission members? Mr. McCord?
I lost your transmission there. We kind of bounced around.
Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no other questions on that.
Okay, hearing this, uh, none. Next item.
Uh, Mr. Standing Chair, we've also lost some internet here at City Hall. Dustin is recovering the PowerPoint slide now. And it looks like we may have lost Brian. He's coming back. So if you just want to take-
We all had that issue. We got kicked off.
If we want to take, uh, just a quick second to regroup and we can get everything refreshed, screens refreshed, and give everyone a chance to get back on.
I'm not sure who else we've lost as well. We may have lost Mr. Perrier.
Well, I'm, audio wise, I'm here, but I'm blind. I, I can't get in, internet back here at the office.
Okay. Well, you're missing a lot of pretty pictures, I tell you.
Yeah.
May- maybe it's a good time to, um, ensure who we have on the line or via video. I've got a limited number of people on my screen that are shown, so.
So Mr. Wilson is still online. He's temporarily stepped away. Uh, Councilman Fennell is here. Council, uh, Mr. Struthers here, uh, Dr. Organe, Alana, uh, Bill, we've lost your video. Dustin, I think you should be back.
Yeah, I'm back.
I see Jillian, but I don't see Jillian. She's, uh, still connected. And we have Mr. Perrier on via the telephone.
Do we have any plans yet to come back face to face, or are we still okay doing this?
We are still waiting on direction from the state and from the mayor. The governor's current executive order expires, uh, sometime this month in June, and it may be renewed, it may not be renewed. It's entirely up to the state government. Dustin, are we back with, uh? All right. Okay. I am pulling up the presentation now. Bear with me one moment, please. Okay.
Apparently we don't- Up yet.
Working on that right now. Dustin logged back in and was kicked off again. So we have... Let me share my screen.
How's that cigar taste, Johnny?
I believe it, guy.
So we are on item nine, which is Pinnacle Bank. Switch.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, Dustin, I've got the PowerPoint pulled up. If you want to just navigate me through it, we can get this moving.
Okay, we ready for item nine?
Yes, we are.
Okay, uh, this is an amended PUD and FMDP for a Pinnacle Bank branch, um, located at, uh, on Greenlee and Noah Lane. Uh, next slide. And go to the next slide. Hmm. I can just talk about it from here. Okay. You there, Josh? We can't hear you, Josh. He might have got kicked off too.
I didn't do it.
I think Josh got kicked off and he's, okay. Let me see if I can sh- screen share here. I'm gonna... All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Hold on.
Technology works wonders until it does not. All right, we are back with Dustin's presentation. Dustin, screen?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Sorry for the disruption.
Okay, okay. Hold on, it's going. All right, here it is. All right, you can see there, it's on, at, uh, Greenlee and Noah, just south of Nashville Pike. Um, it is a forty-one hundred thirty-three square feet, uh, square foot bank branch office with parking and landscaping. Um, it's zone MRO, multiple residential and office. Um, the architecture we have meets the, uh, brick standards. Um, it's, uh, it's got two access points off Greenlee and Noah. Um, they're proposing twenty-two parking spaces, um, but for a financial use of this size, um, they're proposing twenty-two. For a use of this size, fourteen is the maximum number of spaces. So eight of those spaces need to be permeable, um, or they need to work out some kind of deal with stormwater for that. Uh, we told them they need to get us a, uh, letter from LA Greens Architecture Board. All the Greensboro PUD projects have to do that. Um, and we also, as an optional thing, we were wondering if they wanted to move that dumpster enclosure, um, to the back of the building and also provide another sidewalk connection over here on Greenlee, but that's, uh, up to them. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Do we have a representative?
We have, uh, Neil Parish and Chip How- Howarth from, uh... Chip, I know your company. Give me-
S-N-H.
Yes, thank you. Representing the applicant tonight.
Neil, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, I'm gonna let Neil go.
Yeah, thank you guys for, um, for having us this evening and for the help, feedback thus far. Really appreciate it. Yeah, we, uh, as was said, that we have definitely heard the comments about the pervious pavement and have made those spaces to the plan north of the building. Um, the six spaces against the building and then also the six spaces, um, out towards Greenlee Boulevard, uh, will be pavers in the areas of the spaces to be fully permeable. Um, and I, I did, I didn't know, Dustin, if you received the updated plan that I sent you. Um...
Um, last I checked it didn't, but it may have arrived since then. Uh, let's see. Okay, here it is. Let me pull it up for you.
Yes, this will show that, document that a little clearer for everyone. So it's very similar to the previous with a couple, um, changes. The, you can see the, the pervious surfaces there to the north of the project. And then you mentioned the dumpster. Uh, this plan, if you were to see the setbacks on this lot, the lot is, um, is pretty restrictive. And the, the dumps are therefore, there are only a couple small spots where we can get a, uh, a dumpster enclosure at all on here. Uh, and Pinnacle, I don't know that we include the elevations of the dumpster enclosure in the, the elevations that we had sent through initially, but this will be the full masonry to match the building. Um, same color and quality with, uh, stone insets and cap. And then we'll also landscape screen around this dumpster enclosure as well, so it won't be a, an eyesore. But, but that location gives us adequate, um, space for it to get picked and other logistical concerns. One, one change from the plan that you had seen previously, just want to bring to your attention is the, the road, the shared access road, um, to the south has just been offset slightly from the original line that you saw, and that is solely to align better with the Chloe Drive uh, across Noah Lane. Love to, be happy to answer any questions anyone else has about, about the project or, um, we're working with LA Green, um, on the architectural approval and, um, have been working through these other shared, uh, amenities on site with him as well, so, uh, we hope to have that in time for the meeting in a couple of weeks.
What about the additional sidewalk that would improve connectivity?
Um, we certainly can look at that. It, the, we added, we have added, um, the additional sidewalk down the shared access road to the south with the thought that that would be a, a more pedestrian, a likely pedestrian location. The one on the northwest corner, um, i- it comes into this sort of split drive aisle where the traffic is exiting from the drive-through. So, uh, given that, we had thought that the one to the south, we, we added that voluntarily early would be just a better spot, safer spot for pedestrians to come and go.
Commission members? No comments, no questions?
I have one.
Fire away.
Uh, the location of the dumpster and the angle of the dumpster, is this a specialty service that, uh, is serviced by a truck that backs into the dumpster area, or they're gonna be traveling into that area in the wrong direction?
The dumpsters are picked after hours. Um, and we're still working through what the, um, specific trash requirements here, whether they're gonna get a full dumpster or, um, you know, we'll have some other bins in their pick requirements. So the angle, I mean, we could certainly change the angle based on, um, you know, what is ultimately decided for that functionality. But the, the angle of it, to answer your question more directly, if it were a dumpster, they could circulate backwards after hours. But this also due to the constricted site, this keeps it from being, um, the first thing you see as you enter the site too, so it has a, a two-part goal there.
Any other comments or questions? Does, does that answer satisfy you, Bill?
Well, not sure if that's a great idea there, but that's, that's their dealings.
Well...
I mean, they'll be, they'll probably have an ATM machine on that side and they'll have... Uh, there's a small, small chance of conflict, but just a question.
Uh, do you want some dialogue with the gentlemen that are on the line? Or you just want to deal with that later?
Uh, I think this might be something we would, could deal with later and, uh, particularly if they provide us some more information between now and the planning commission meeting. Given the unusual shape of the site, although it meets code with the pedestrian connection to the sidewalk on Noah Lane, I think it would be a good idea if they can find a way to also provide one out to Greenlee Boulevard somewhere near, uh, their northeast corner.
You like, I'm sorry, sir, you said, would you like it on the northeast corner or do you want it?
Given the un- you, you meet code now, but given the unusual shape of this property and particularly the adjacent uses, if you could also provide a separate one to the, somehow to get it to, uh, Greenlee Boulevard near the, uh, northeast corner, that would be a good idea too.
Okay, well, why don't we look at that, um, a little closer before the meeting and then the dumpster will clarify what exactly, um... Yes, sir, and what units they intend to put in there, and that may help us get a clearer picture of use there.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll see you in two weeks and, um, our next item on the agenda.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, this is Dustin, Gallatin Planning. Um, this was, this is for Revere Apartments at Hidden Creek. It's an amended PMDP and revised FMDP. Um, it's, this is just an administrative thing. Um, uh, it's located on Big Station Camp north of three eighty-six. Um, the only, the, why they're here is that the building got built inadvertently one foot closer to the right of way than it should have been. Um, so it's now set back nineteen feet from the road instead of twenty feet, uh, from the property line, I mean. Um, so they're just coming in and, and amending that PMDP and FMDP to, uh, rectify that situation.
Do we have discussion?
Ain't no discussion there.
Not unless you want to say something. Okay. Hearing none, next item.
Okay, this is, uh, Newman's Crossing Twice Daily Convenience Store and Gas Station. Uh, it's amended, amended PMDP and revised FMDP, uh, located there at Long Hollow Pike and Big Station Camp. It is a forty-eight hu- forty-eight hundred square foot convenience store with eight fuel islands. Uh, it's zone mixed use, part of Newman's Crossing. Uh, it was set aside as a commercial out parcel basically for a use of this type from the PMDP, PMDP. Um, there's a, they, we need a, uh, connection to the public sidewalk. I've circled in red there where the likely spot of that should be. Um, it'd also be nice if they wanted to put one on the other side. This site is similar to the previous item or the se- you know, the, um, Pinnacle, uh, bank branch because it's on a corner, so it kind of backs up to two sidewalks, so it would be nice if they could connect to both, but, um, at, at least one we'll need. Um, drainage, architecture, and landscaping all look good, including the, um, fuel canopy and the, uh, uh, the, the facade there, all with the brick and the, and the enhanced, uh, fuel canopy with the, with the pitch roof there. Um, there was some question about whether this would be deferred by engineering, uh, because of a lack of stormwater calks. And then also I think Bill had something to say about the, um, the timing of the building uh, of the driveways based on, um, some other development that was going on, going in nearby. Uh, so that, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Yes, my, the, my only concern is that, uh, depending on- Yes, my, the my only concern is that depending on which project advances first, if Twice Daily is ahead of schedule of the Publix build or the shopping center and that it ties into those private drives, then some arrangement will need to be made for them to construct those private drives offsite if they're ahead of the other development.
This is Brad Bork with GMC. I'm running as the applicant. To answer that question about the drives, we're working with the, the other section and we'll definitely make sure to work with them on the timing of those driveways.
Hey, Bill, this is Randy Perry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
We did have a meeting with the developer and the timing at the time, well, that was a question at the time is who goes first, and we have spoken with the developer. They will construct the parts that are required to make that L shape if Twice Daily is out in front of the rest of the development. So we've had preliminary discussions. I agree, we need to tie it down more. But that L shape between the two roads would be a part of the development.
Okay, is that something to be added to the plans as a note?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry, I got disconnected. I don't know what I missed here. This is Dustin.
Do we have questions from commission members? Any further discussion? If not, we'll see everybody in two weeks.
Thank you.
The Noel at Fairview.
Oh, let's see. I think I can go ahead and take this one. If we can advance to the next screen. Commissioners, I just wanted to bring to your attention an issue at the Noel at Fairview. There was a master plan that was approved a couple of years ago, which showed a small, narrow tract of land between two lots. And that's shown on your screen circled in orange. That little tract of land is about five feet wide. And the applicant had proposed to amend the master plan to eliminate that tract as well as eliminate a street connection out to Brown's Lane. The amendment failed. Planning Commission did not approve it, so the connection to Brown's Lane remains. And this little tract of land stayed on there as well. The applicant came in and platted the property and recently came in with a minor amendment to a plat, which only requires the planning commission chair and the secretary to approve. And decided that this little strip was not a significant change to the master plan. And, and the chairman and the secretary signed the plat amendment. So I'm just bringing it to your attention so that the master plan will need to reflect that this was an administrative amendment, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, so you're aware of it. Again, the plat's already been amended to remove it. And I think we had another slide that shows a blow up of that. The next slide may show it in more detail. Well, maybe the next one. Okay, maybe not. Oh, there we go. So you can see, this is from the plat. And you can see a, where the old line was and the property line was just moved over, so lot seventy-five became five feet wider as a result of this. They still exceed the minimum required open space for their zoning district. So that's all I had on that. And then I have one minor thing to tell you about, or one other thing to tell you about. Is that we'll bring this to the planning commission as well. It'll, it'll be a resolution to amend the urban growth boundary. It only involves two jurisdictions, that being the city of Hendersonville and city of Gallatin. And what we're doing here, Hendersonville has already taken action to de-annex that area in the striped area with the light gray, which includes a section of Big Station Camp Boulevard and parcel. I, I think it's eleven point zero one. That's shown there on the screen, so that area is about twenty acres total. And including the right of way. And the city would then remove from their urban growth boundary that little strip that extends down from Big Station Camp Boulevard to Lower Station Camp Creek Road. And cede that away to essentially Hendersonville, so we're swapping with Hendersonville. Now, what this does is put Station, Big Station Camp Boulevard, we'll put it in Gallatin's urban growth boundary, but not in the city limits of Gallatin. So maintenance and responsibility for maintenance of that road is still undecided at this point. It will not obligate the city to annex the right of way and/or maintain the road. But that little strip that goes down to Lower Station Camp is a, essentially a private road that bisects the Rogers Group facility. So this is an arrangement that will eventually allow for that parcel eleven point oh one to be annexed into the city of Gallatin and become part of the Westfield master plan with an amendment to that, so. What we'll do is we'll formalize it to get your endorsement, if that's what you want to do with this, and this will also go to the city council simultaneously. I'm presenting this to the city council tomorrow night. This was essentially requested by the owner of Westfield Southeastern. And we've talked about it with Hendersonville for some time now. So it'll probably be followed up before too long with an annexation request, at least for the parcel, maybe not the right of way. But we'll, we'll, we'll come to that bridge a little bit later. So just to let you know. And that's all I have. Unless y'all have some other things? Josh, you might want to mention, Josh, are you on there or you get kicked off?
I'm here, Bill.
Okay, well, Josh might want to mention to you about the Plan Gallatin work session meetings that we have aligned coming up here in the next couple of weeks. You have that list?
I do. Thank you, Bill. Let me pull that up for you all. We've had several great discussions in the past couple of weeks with restarting, re-engaging the public with Plan Gallatin. We have a series of nine small group roundtable discussions open. You can see on the screen, one of them's already reached its max number of participants. But we encourage everyone that's listening via, anyone from the public or that is watching this from Zoom to sign up for one of these work sessions. I shouldn't say workshop, roundtable discussions about Gallatin's future. And we're thrilled to be able to use Zoom technology to do this in the current environment that we find ourselves in. So again, here are the nine work sessions, June ninth, tenth, eleventh, sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth at a variety of different times, both in the morning and after working hours as late as six PM for, in order to reach a larger group of people. I also want to talk a little bit about the Architectural Review, Architectural Standards Committee that has met once. We've distributed some information to them. And we are having another meeting with them on Thursday to start the discussion about developing more concrete standards for reviewing and approving architecture as part of the permit process. So we're excited to launch for that group to have launched and for us to be working with them again on Thursday. That is also going to take place via Zoom, and I encourage anyone that's listening from the public or watching this on Facebook to go to the city's website and you can get all the Zoom login information from there. Also, it is the end of the budget year, so if you have not completed your training, please let us know. We can sign you up for some digital options that are available and pay for that out of the planning commission's budget. So you can send that directly to me, josh.king@gallatinTN.gov. Come by the office or give our office a phone call. We'd be happy to schedule that, sign you up for it. Bill, that's all I've got. I'll turn it back over to you.
What about the Zoom meeting at eight o'clock? Is that misprint?
The Zoom meeting at eight o'clock?
I got a email from Laurie Smalley on the twenty-ninth of May. And it said work session at eight PM, June eighth.
That would be today. We are not going to have a second one. So I think you may have seen, it may have, you may have been sent an earlier incorrect meeting notice. So the meeting was at five, as all of our meetings usually start at five.
You mean the meeting I came to fifteen minutes late?
We didn't notice.
Good. Good, I'll, I'll just stay on when you guys leave to catch up, okay?
That sounds like adequate penance to me.
Well, if there's nothing else, John, I know you're really frustrated to not have any visual, but do you want to take over and end the meeting?
Oh, well, I've listened with great interest. I'm just blind. So we adjourn, sit back in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank y'all very much.